Everyone and welcome to the Monday, July 7th, 2025, regular meeting of the Rochester Hills City Council. For any members of the public wishing to make public comment on an item on the agenda, or an item that is not on the agenda, please remember to pick up one of the blue public comment cards in the back of the room on the table, fill it out, and hand it to our recording secretary, so that we can make sure that we call on you at the appropriate time on the agenda and make sure that you get heard. As always, public comment is limited to three minutes. Ms. Secretary, if you could please take the roll.
Thank you, President Deal. President Deal?
Here.
Vice President Karlock?
Here.
Mr. Blair?
Here.
Ms. Moreland?
Here.
Ms. Mungiole?
Here.
Ms. Dubauer?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
President Deal, we have a quorum.
Indeed, we do. And now if everyone will please rise, and our youth council representative will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda. I have had one minor request to modify the agenda, and that is currently the appointment of the Rochester Hills Government Youth Council Representatives under presentations. It should be properly under nominations and appointments, which would come just before new business on our agenda. With that modification, we have a motion by Vice President Karlock, seconded by Ms. Moreland. All those in favor say aye?
President?
Yes.
I wanted that consented.
I do that under consent.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
With that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none. That motion is approved. Council and Youth Committee reports. And as always, we'll kick it off with our Youth Council Representative. This week we have Janelle.
Hello, my name is Janelle Hayes. I'm a rising 12th grader at Stony Creek High School, and I've served on the Rochester Hills Youth Council for the past three years, and I'm on the planning commission. This month, Youth Council has participated in Festive of the Hills, and many interviews for the Youth Council for the 2025 to 2026 term. This month, we are participating in Brooklyn's Black Party on July 30th, which will be running the tie dye station, which will have tote bags, headbands, and a few other things. This month, we are planning to film our end of the year report for Youth Council, or for City Council, in which we will showcase all of the wonderful events we have hosted this year. Our next meeting will be August 6th at 6:00 PM, and that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you very much for that report. Next up, we have Mrs. Dubauer.
Thank you, President Deal. Can you share my screen, please? It's okay if it's not working.
Oh, oh.
That's the...
We need these parties. That's probably Joe's.
Thank you. So, July 20th, from 1 to 4, at the Rochester Hills Museum, the Van Huse and Farm Calf Barn, we're going to be hosting Peace, Love, and Me again. It's an activity that's targeted towards our youth. It's a mental health fair. It's a good opportunity for our youth that are out of school, that don't have necessarily their school counselors and teachers and peers to talk to, to just kind of unwind and have a day of rock climbing and games and therapy dogs and live music. It's going to be from 1 to 4 on July 20th. Thank you.
Sounds like they got a lot of fun stuff to do there. I saw the chair massages there. You can't go wrong with that. I mean, who doesn't want, I mean, who doesn't need that? Mrs. Mungiole?
Thank you, President Deal. I don't have slides, but what I do have is some very exciting information about Ra-Ra. Today, we kicked off their work on their master plan. It has been something that, since becoming a board member, we have talked about it. We've had other challenges to deal with, but now we are starting the master plan, planning process. They have pages of meetings that they're going to have, and that's where I need the council to be part of, as well as some of our staff, to participate in some of these meetings. Information gathering, providing insight into what we think are, would make great recreation projects and programs. What other opportunities and/or obstacles does Ra-Ra have that need to be addressed by the board? And as a board member, that's what I'm looking for. We also looked, and Janelle, this is where I may need your help, is having a youth representative on the Ra-Ra board. So I was going to reach out to Erin and see if we could get that to be one of your committee assignments, because it should be a very exciting year for Ra-Ra as we go through this piece with the master plan targeted for completion in December, with approval at our, final approval of our minutes in January. So, for the community, if you see invitations from Ra-Ra to participate in any of the open houses, community gathering events, online surveys, we truly are looking for your feedback as residents on the future of Ra-Ra. What we've done well, what we can do better, and how you can get engaged in this overall process. So please watch for that communication coming over the next couple of weeks, and they'll be doing those communications through the end of October, with us seeing there's a board, seeing that draft of the master plan at our December board meeting. So we're looking forward to a lot of community engagement in this process. Thank you very much, President Deal. Oh, I do have one other thing. I needed to give a shout out to our fire department and our paramedics, EMTs. A week ago Saturday, we had a medical emergency at my house, and my husband ended up getting a ride in the ambulance to the Henry Ford Health System Rochester Hills, and was a visitor there for several days. Food poisoning ended up being the final thing, but when you're panic-stricken at home with a husband that's not well, you need our EMTs, paramedics to be there giving, keeping you calm. Me, in particular, my husband, for sure. And I also want to give a call out to the nurses and the staff at Henry Ford Health Systems Rochester Hills, because my husband was a patient there for many days. The emergency room did a fabulous job, as well as all of the staff on the fifth floor. So I do want to make sure I give my sincere thanks to everyone that helped us get through those challenges, and grateful for their professionalism in this trying time as a family. So thank you very much to our staff, both for Rochester Hills and the hospital. Thank you very much, President Deal.
And thank goodness he's back home and well. Very good. Yeah, I can hear that. Yep, very good. Very good. I'm glad it had a happy ending. Seeing no other council committee reports, we will move on to item number 2025-0281, Presentation on the Pathway Renewal, from our CFO, Mr. Snyder. You can probably stay right there if you want. Okay, very good.
All right. Well, thank you, President Deal, Vice President Karlock, City Council, Ms. Hayes, and Ms. Mills, if I could ask you, oh, you've already on it. Very good. Thank you. Well, tonight, we're going to be discussing pathways, and in particular, pathway funding through the dedicated pathway millage that the city currently has. Again, this is simply a presentation tonight. I'll cover some of the financial implications regarding the pathway millage. There is no official vote at the end of this presentation. Really, it's more to get the wheels of thought going for discussion on the council's part. So really, we're just looking for city council's thoughts and discussions of a future pathway millage, as well as your direction. So basically, we can all be on the collective same page moving forward. Okay, so the current pathway millage, it was approved by voters back in 2006 for 20 years, and it's currently in place through fiscal year 2026. So we already have kind of the funding in place for next year with the existing pathway millage. Basically, we're in year 19 of '20, so we've got a year to kind of plan and get our ducks in a row here. I will say, 20 years, that's a long millage. That's a long time to revisit a millage, and the first time that, really, I've been in this role to revisit this. So we really haven't had an opportunity to address this, to look at it, and do some analysis for quite a long time. And as I mentioned, pathway funding is secure for next year, so we will have to have something in place to take to the voters by no later than July of next year. That's kind of the end of the road. However, if we wanted to get something on the ballot here for the November 2025, we probably would have to have direction and decision to move forward for the, at the next council meeting on July 21st, and that provides enough time for Clerk Scott to get everything done and on the November ballot. So here's the pathway millage language. I won't go into too much of the detail here, but basically, anything related to pathway, pathway-related items can be, you know, basically funded through the pathway millage, as well as activities along the Clinton River Trail. Now, one item, I do have a question into our city attorney, Mr. Christ, is could we potentially add the Paint Creek Trailway to this as well? So he's exploring that and seeing if we might be able to add that to the pathway renewal coming forward. So, the pathway millage, basically, it is at .1715 mil, and this will be for this upcoming year, and it generates approximately $850,000 per year. The rest of the pathway fund revenue is really very small, about $25,000, and that's primarily consisting of investment earnings around, you know, $15,000 per year. So grand total, about $875,000 per year, is generated through our pathway millage and the pathway fund itself, and this is the pathway operating fund. So that's kind of covers the revenues. On the expenditure side, our general ongoing operations, maintenance, and things along of our pathways are right around $475,000, and those operating and maintenance activities consist of, you know, crack sealing, shoulder mowing, tree maintenance, snow plowing, et cetera, all the stuff that kind of goes along with keeping our pathways in good order. Basically, what's left is about $400,000 that is transferred out of the pathway operating fund and into the pathway construction fund. That's where we do the actual heavy capital labor. And that $400,000 per year that's transferred out there, that basically helps to keep the pathway operating fund, this 214 fund, right at its 25% annual operating target fund balance. So, any questions on the pathway operating? It's pretty, pretty cut and dry. Now, moving over to the pathway construction fund, the $400,000 that moves out of pathway operating, goes into pathway construction. Again, there's some other pathway construction revenue, $50,000. That's primarily the investment revenues in that fund. So grand total, right around $450,000 per year of pathway construction fund revenue. What do we do with that $450,000? Well, the vast majority goes into the pathway rehabilitation program, right around $400,000 per year. The pathway construction fund funds that pathway rehab, and then, but you know, $50,000 if there are other pathway segments, or kind of enhancements to our pathway network. Some of the things that we've kind of got on the docket to get accomplished over the years, these would be pedestrian pathway crossing enhancements, and basically safety enhancements, and things like that to, you know, make sure all the folks that travel along our pathways are doing so safely. So, this last year, or currently this year, our pathway rehabilitation program, that $400,000, that went to the segment along South Boulevard between Crooks and Liverneuil. And that section, that one mile section of pathway costs right around $400,000. I believe that segment is nearly complete. It sounds like it's just some small restoration work is still underway to get that one done. Big thing to keep in mind here is the city has 100 miles of pathways throughout the whole city. And so, at this pace, if we do one mile per year, it would take 100 years to get around and rehabilitate and reconstruct all 100 miles of our system. When talking with our DPS department, they've recommended a typical new pathway segment, typically is right around a 20-year lifespan before that big, heavy, major capital replacement and rehabilitation is needed. So if we use that 20 years, if we want to get around every pathway every 20 years and rehabilitate it, we need to move up from one mile a year, probably somewhere closer to five miles a year. And just using some simple math, if one mile costs $400,000, if we wanted to target five miles a year, that would be looking somewhere in the $2 million per year range. So we've kind of got a delta of about $1.6 million on an annual basis of pathway rehabilitation. So looking now at some of the funding for that, item number one, that's our current .1715 mil that's in place, kind of went through this, generates about $875,000 for pathways. The first $475 is maintenance off the top. That leaves the $400,000 for the pathway rehab, which we just mentioned, went through. That's about one mile of pathway. If we wanted to generate that $1.6 million delta to get to the $2 million per year range, where you could do five years of pathway, that is approximately an additional .3285 mil. So basically, if a grand total, if it was, we went from the .1715 up to around a half a mil, .5, that would generate approximately 2.5 million. Again, the first $475 goes out for just the ongoing maintenance and rehabilitation and snow plowing and everything. That would leave approximately $2 million per year for the pathway rehabilitation program, and we estimate that could take care of five miles of pathway per year. You know, this funding level would also provide some capacity to support pathway enhancements, i.e. those road crossings that we, that we talked about, as well as some financial capacity to address those various pathway gaps that are all the way throughout the city. Those two or three, you know, homes that, you know, we do not have the right-of-way, and then there's a gap, people either forced down the road, or, you know, traversing across someone's private property. So, you know, it's kind of hard to add, to fill in those gaps, to expand our system, when we're barely able to, and not even really able to, keep it up with the level of service and ability that we have now. So just kind of touching on a couple key dates. Again, the current pathway millage is in place. We're in year 19 of '20, so we've got next year to take care of 2026. But we must have something that, the latest goes on the ballot by November 2026 to be effective, starting 2027, when the old pathway millage basically expires. If we wanted to have something on this November ballot, November 2025, we would need to have that ballot language approved at the next city council meeting. And if we wanted to wait until basically the last chance, we have to have something in place, really by around this time next year, July 2026, to get on the November 2026 general election date. So here's just a couple, you know, basic options I kind of threw out. This is basically where I'm shortly going to be kicking this over to City Council for your, you know, comments, deliberations, questions, et cetera. Some of the options, we could just renew the current pathway millage at effectively the same millage rate, and that would keep things, you know, same bottom line. That would be around the .1715. We've already talked about that. That's, we can rehabilitate about one mile per year. The option could be to renew it for a short amount of time, potentially five years. The more standard number, number of years is around 10 years. That's what I would probably, if you were asking me what, you know, year recommended, the 10-year cycle seems pretty good, between the time it's approved, and then the next time that you can touch it in 10 years to readdress. There's also the potential to, council decided to increase that pathway millage. If you wanted a five mile per year, that would be a 20-year replacement cycle. We've kind of went through this previously. It's going to be about .5. If you wanted just a slightly lower level of service, say four miles per year, that would be a 25-year replacement cycle, a little longer than what DPS recommends, but that would be somewhere in the .42 mil range. What this would mean for, you know, the voters at home, right now, the pathway millage at .1715, if you are living in a $400,000 house, approximately $34 per year. At the five miles per year, or 20-year replacement cycle, at that .5 mil level, that would be approximately $100 per year. And the four miles per year, .42 mil, that would be somewhere around $84 per year for each resident. Another option is, you just say, Mr. Snyder, go back and try to figure out, try to find the extra $1.6 million somewhere, of which I can tell you, it could come from two spots. One, it could be an annual allotment from the Capital Improvement Fund, of which, you know, you're kind of competing with parks projects, facilities projects, et cetera. And this is not just a one-time allocation. This is an annual, it should be going on basically forever, as long as we have our pathway system. The other option is, we do have the option to take some money, or reallocate some money from the major road fund. You are allowed to use major road fund dollars on non-motorized pathways throughout the city, but then that would be around 1.6 million out of the major road fund every year, and that competes with all the other major road projects that we have. So, in closing, it really concludes my presentation so far this evening. Kind of short and sweet, just kind of laying this issue out there. We have the opportunity to address the pathway millage. We will have to do something. I guess what we're looking for is which way, was council kind of giving administration direction on which way to go. So with that, I will turn it back over to City Council, and I am here for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. So as I, as I understand it, we have, you know, 100, 100 miles of pathway in the city. We currently have a millage that can pay for the reconstruction of one mile per year, meaning that we can, you know, getting one mile per year for 100 miles of pathway, pretty easy math.
Yeah.
One, you know, basically, you're looking at a replacement cycle of 100 years.
Correct.
And that, and that does not include if we were to replace or add any pathways into the city. That just is all 100 years on the existing pathways that we have. Otherwise, we just patch them up, and that's, you know, the best we can do.
Got it.
Okay, so, that doesn't sound sustainable to me. From where I, from where I sit, you know, I don't think that there's anything that has a usable lifespan of 100 years, certainly not a pathway. You're probably looking at, like, as DPS indicates, you know, we're looking at more of a, akin to a 20-year lifespan. You know, and we do get a lot of usage on our pathways. So that seems, and even if we were to raise the millage and get on to a 20, to a 20-year, let's say, five miles of replacement per year, that also would not expand, that doesn't provide funding to expand the pathways at all. That's really just maintaining what we have.
Yeah, primarily, it's maintaining what you have. And maybe you can get a couple gaps in here and there, but that's not a large distance.
And it would, and if anything to come out, like, if we were going to do gaps under, like, let's say we did a five-year replacement plan, and we were going to, like, try to fill in gaps. Like, I know one gap, for example, that we have, we just had the property donated on Rochester Road, and there's a gap there between the, the...
Yeah, by Bourdines, right?
Yes, by Bourdines. And that's, you know, slated for, if we were going to re, if we were going to redo that pathway, where would that money come from? If we were going to do that path, connect that pathway?
Yeah, it would come through the pathway construction fund.
Okay. All right. We do have some other questions on this. We'll start with Mr. Blair.
Thank you, President Deal, and thank you, Joe, for laying that out so clearly, as you always do. Though, wouldn't July be the end of the path, not the end of the road?
Sure.
It's not, seriously, though, I have a few questions. I'm not shocked that we're here. We've been building pathways left and right over the past few years, and overwhelmingly positive results, from what I'm hearing, especially up and down both sides now of Adams, which has been fantastic. But one of my questions, is it, is it linear? Like, if we've got one, if it's $400,000 for a mile, is it $2 million for five miles, or are there economics of scale there, where we might be able to do more length of pathway for a little bit less?
I would have to think so, because I think, and we'd have to, you know, work with our DPS on there, I don't think we would do a mile here, a mile here, a mile here, a mile here, all throughout the city. What we would have the ability to do is to do five miles along John R., five miles along Crooks, five miles along, and then, you know, it probably lowers that, the economies of scale lowers that per unit down.
I mean, I'm not hugely opposed to, you know, raising $2 million, but I'd be very disappointed if it was only five miles that we got out of that $2 million, right? Which kind of leads into my next question, which is, how do we grade the quality of our pathways? With our road system, we've got like a pacer that we use, where we drive it. Do we do like a pictures, or golf carts, or satellite view, or something to gauge where we need to focus those efforts?
Yes, and that, how we determine which mile to do is by DPS assessments. They go out, very similar to pacer, where they drive the roads and score it. They actually drive and inspect the pathways to score them.
Okay. I guess what I'd like to know is, you know, what's the current condition? Like, are we going to immediately be doing all that $2 million, or going to ramp it up, and so forth? And one of my other questions is, I've been getting a lot of questions about snow removal on our pathways. Now, I know we obviously prioritize the roads, but if we do this kind of an increase, can we allocate some money to remove snow on our pathways? Because a lot of residents have stated that they'd like to have those cleared.
Yeah, somewhat, it's probably, the snow clearing is probably capacity with our DPW. I mean, after there's a snow event, you know, the first priority is get the roadways clear, and then, you know, they move over to the pathways, a little less critical. Could I say, if we pass this millage, you know, we'll get every pathway plowed in 24 hours? That would be overpromising, and I don't think, I don't know what Mr. Fritz is doing, is if he's shaking his head or not. But unless we were to add more staff, basically, that were more dedicated to the pathways.
All right, cool. That's, I know we're not voting on this, but those are just my concerns, the linear nature of it, and then how we're grading them. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Back to you, President Deal.
Thank you very much. Councilman Blair actually prompted another question in my mind. Are there any economies of scale that can be obtained through bidding it along with our traditional asphalt replace, our annual asphalt concrete replacement?
We currently do that. We bid that mile of pathway along with the asphalt subdivisions that we're doing. We would continue to do that.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, President Deal. Thank you, Mr. Snyder, for bringing this to our attention. Obviously, the pathways are a nice amenity in our community, and we should take care of them. But my focus is on other funding sources. For instance, in the first quarter budget amendment, we added $220,000 from a Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. $220,000 is a substantial amount in the first quarter. We're working on a project tonight from DPS that a TAP grant is going to be utilized, or at least applied for, in the excess of $1 million. So you don't make any provision... So you don't make any provision here of other funding sources. Can you talk briefly about what would be available, how much would be available, and how we could subsidize this requirement?
Yeah, with, with those particular grants, those are mostly safety enhancements. I believe the TAP grant is the path, the bridge along Rochester Road that will be coming for you later on tonight. So yes, absolutely, we're going to still leverage every single grant out there. There aren't a lot of grants for general rehabilitation, things that don't score well on a, on a safety enhancements. So these would be more just rehabbing the miles of pathway we currently have, and then exploring any and all grant opportunities out there, if there are ways to make our pathway network safer. For example, the enhancements along the Rochester Road pathway by that bridge is a little, little treacherous over there. So that's what the grant is doing, exploring ways to make it safer and make it better. So I would say a lot of those grant dollars are more for the enhancements, the safety enhancement sort of features, where probably the dollars that I kind of described are more the, the day-to-day, annual, you know, we just got to keep, keep our rehabilitation on a little bit of a quicker pace.
But that, that grant, that Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant, went into property maintenance or pathway maintenance?
It did, but I believe, and, and I think also local streets as well. But those, I believe that those dollars really were more for hiring a consultant to come out and look at different opportunities and things like that.
Not actually doing the work?
Not actually doing the asphalt rehabilitation more, hey, we're going to come up with a plan, and we're going to find different safety enhancements, of which, okay, then there's the study, here's the various safety enhancements. Now we've got to fund, the funding to actually do the safety enhancements. Now, going through that process with that grant, that allows us potentially to apply for other grants to actually do those enhancements. So we would want to leverage, I always like leveraging outside money first before we leverage any inside money, but there would still be a, a local match for any of those. So, you know, and those funds would come through the pathway millage for those enhancements and safety enhancements.
Is there a scenario or an option or a calculation that you could prepare for us to say, to subsidize just increasing the millage by X or increasing the millage by Y and subsidizing it through grants that may or may not be available? I'd like to find a balance. I'm sure the county, the state, and the federal government has monies for these coveted pathways. They're all about connectivity.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there are, like I mentioned, I don't know if there are many grants out there for just rehabbing a mile or two miles of existing pathway that's, you know, like along John R. I don't know if that will score real well. But in more high-traffic areas along Rochester Road and, and those areas where there's kind of not, it's unsafe condition, that's where we'll score well. But just, you know, rehabbing, you know, John R. by, you know, Blumer Park and Borden Park, that might not, I don't know if there's too many grants out there for just rehabbing those sorts of things. If you're not enhancing it and making it safer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood.
The biggest thing, I guess, is, you know, the, those pathways are city assets, and we are liable for those. So when they do kind of fall into disrepair, and somebody, you know, trips and falls and, you know, runs their bike into a pothole or something, you know, the city could be liable if we're not doing a good enough job keeping up with the maintenance on those.
Understood. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next up, Mrs. Mangioli.
Thank you, President Deal. Thank you very much, Mr. Snyder, for the information and for coming to us and asking us. And I didn't send you questions in advance because you said we were going to have a chance to discuss it here. So, so I do have a couple things. First, this agenda was very challenging for me because there is this potential tax increase, and then the police millage later in the agenda, which is also talking about a tax increase. And I am one, as you and most staff know, that do not like to raise taxes. So this is going to be a challenge for me.
Understood.
Safety, however, is the city's first strategic objective, and as you just mentioned, the disrepair of our pathways is extremely important. I found that just making comments here at this dais, I had someone, Mr. Fritz had someone in his team went out, and they, they smoothed some of those tree roots that were making huge speed bumps in the pathway just around my subdivision. That didn't include coming out there and re, putting new asphalt, repaving it. It didn't make the, you can find where all those strips were done because they didn't go back and fill them in unless it was a gap in the asphalt itself. So safety is extremely important. And we found through COVID and the use of our parks that our residents are using them a lot. We don't get a counter necessarily on our, on our pathways to say, we had a million, $2 million, but we do know that our students do use them as they're going to the schools, especially the ones on the main roads where we have the pathways. So safety is extremely important. So that's where I'm going to have to balance asking for money versus taxing our residents. The gaps piece that you mentioned, my understanding is most of those gaps, and I know of at least three or four in our community, it's private property. So unless we get a very willing homeowner to donate the frontage of their property, or we do a taking of their property to fill their gaps, it's highly unlikely that the gap filling is going to happen without expenditure of property. So unless there's something I'm missing. So can we fill gaps without buying property?
No.
Okay.
No. They would have to, you know, give right-of-way access to, to put the pathway along their, their property.
Okay. My only concern, and I again want to thank Mr. Fritz and his team, is when we have a pathway that's going to end, we should warn the residents, safety first, where there's a safe spot for them to cross the road, as opposed to waiting until they get to the end and find out, oh, the path's now ended, and I now either have to cross in the middle of Tinkin, where there is no intersection near me, or I have to go back a quarter mile to find a, a street and cross safely at a street crossing. So gaps, yes, there's, there's a challenge, but not one that we could feasibly do within the, the revenue generated from a millage, from what I understand, because there's four of them, and they're very nice, older properties that have significant frontage on major roads, including the one right near Newiki Park, which we couldn't end up doing last year. So observations for me and concerns that I'll want to make sure we're addressing. The other question I have is, why are we waiting for November of '26? Couldn't we do it on the primary in August of '26? We know there'll be a primary.
Absolutely.
And this way, we would have the opportunity to do it in August and November if it failed in August. Does that timing work? I'm looking at the clerk because I own, she would have.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there is, what, about two to three months, probably three months. We have to get the ballot language approved.
By September, well, it'd have to be printed, so we would have a short timeline if it fails in August to get it done for the September ballots that get mailed. Yeah, it would have to be, yes. Okay. But those are, those are two options for '26, plus the November '25 ballot option.
That would be the, the first opportunity, November '25, and really the last opportunity would be November '26. So we do have some time in there to get our ducks in a row.
Yes. And when it comes to prioritization of snow removal, I would prefer, Mr. Fritz, that we do the major streets, especially because of the kids using them to go to school, the walkers to all of the schools. Maybe my subdivision Collector Road is not as, quite as important as Adams Road would be to get the students safely to their schools as a first priority, though I understand from Mr. Blair's comments, the concern from our entire community. And I will say, I've actually heard some people say, why is my pathway plowed before the street was plowed? So we need to balance all of that piece out of there. From my feedback, possibly option two on the three, the point three two eight five mils, asking for more money to get this done faster. Tonight, when we approve that TAP grant, we're now going to go to 101 years because we're putting another mile into the inventory. But I would want to say it's conditional on, first, we fix everything, and then we look at adding new. So for those areas where we have gaps or safety enhancements, that we find alternative funding sources for them, but that the existing 101-plus miles are fixed first, and that we make sure that the operations and maintenance costs are, that the increases in those are only based on inflation and not for other things that come along with it.
Yeah, that's true.
Maybe I would increase, safety first versus tax increases, and knowing that our pathways are in poor shape in many sections of this community. And I do hear from residents, as well as my husband and I use them in our community as well, they need to be fixed. I won't be here in 100 years to see that happen, but maybe in 20, I could. So I would want to make it, that we could word it to the residents, that we fix what we have first before we go and add more. And then we leave it to Mr. Fritz and you to figure out how to get it from the major road funding to do those other safety enhancements, if possible. So my feedback for this evening.
Good feedback, thank you.
Thank you very much, President Deal.
Mrs. Moreland?
Thank you, President Deal. I wanted to follow up on the gaps as well. When we have a gap, because perhaps a homeowner has said, you know, no, I don't want that in front of my yard, do we go back to them, especially like when the home changes hands? Or do we follow up or at any point, or can a homeowner say, hey, I just bought this house, and I noticed my neighbor has a sidewalk? Can we go on the list to get sidewalk? Or how does that work?
From, from what I gather, when a home change is over, you know, prior owner does not want to give up the, the right-of-way to put a pathway, but when they sell, then I believe we send a letter to the, the new homeowner, hey, you know, would you be interested? Call this number. I don't think it's very aggressive. You know, it's just, hey, here's a friendly letter, if you'd like to get your, you know, pathway, let us know, and, you know, if you'd like to donate it, great. Or, you know, we could pay the, you know, the, and I think that's where we get the attorneys in somewhere to determine what the, the value of that pathway portion is in front of the home.
Okay. And if you are a homeowner, and you, I know a homeowner that's on Liburnoy, and they see kids coming from Lutheran High Northwest and going down to the corner of Auburn, to the gas station there, Auburn and Libernoy. And they're always walking, and then there, there's no path there for part of it, or no sidewalk, so then they go out into the street and that sort of thing. So if this homeowner can, can they, what do they do if they say, I really think there needs to be a pathway here, what can I do? What can that homeowner do?
I would encourage you, call the Department of Public Services, and we can have a conversation. Now, one thing I will caution, if, if there's maybe a, a gap of five houses, and it's the person in the middle, I don't know if we're going to do that little section, but maybe one thing we could do is, you know, acquire the right-of-way, and then when we get some of the other ones next to it, then we could, you know, move, move that way. I don't think they want to have, you know, a gap and a gap and an open and.
Right, right.
But if we can get the other two, and then, boy, okay, great, now we got three out of the five, great, and then we can work on the other two.
Well, I know two of them are up for sale, two of the spots.
Okay. Well, we're going to get some letters out to those folks.
Exactly. Okay, thank you. I will let them know.
Mrs. Neubauer?
Thank you, President Deal. I'm not sure if you have the answer to this question, but if you could maybe try to look it up for next time. But since the 20-year millage that was passed and that's set, is set to expire in 2026, do we have a number of pathways that have been replaced or restored? Do we know how much that tax season covered, or how many of the 100 miles it covered, or how many of those? Because then that would reduce, so if the lifespan of, let's say, a major road is, I'm not really sure how long, right? But if we do some math and use the 20 years that we've just paid for, to see, that would maybe reduce it to like, say, 80 miles, or, you know, 90 miles or something like that that needs to be reduced. Because Adams was done, Walton was done, you know, several major roads have been done. And we could calculate what the lifespan is based on prior, prior research of what those major roads are compared to like the minor roads. I'd like to know an answer to that, if we can kind of do some.
Sure.
Research or reference.
Yeah, we can, we can find out, you know, what that maybe exact number is over the past 20 years, but just because we did a, rehabbed a mile of pathway, you know, back in 2006 or '07 when the millage just started, it's probably getting close to being due.
So that's why I was saying, like, I'd like to know what the lifespan is with the materials that we use and the materiality that, you know, could maybe be, you know, with changing materiality and technology all the time, like, who knows, maybe that could be reduced and would shorten the span of time that we would need to do the taxes. And then another thing I'd like to add is that with respect to our master plan right now and planning and economic division, we have, one of the things that we were focusing on is connectivity and pathways around the schools, because there are several areas where kids walk to school that don't have sidewalks that are dangerous. And that was one of the focuses that we were trying to do in the, in the master plan. So if we did approve this, although I would want to rehab those, you know, obviously dangerous things, this kid's safety is huge. You know, in our area alone, the kids have to cross Avon and Adams without sidewalks to get to Meadowbrook Elementary sometimes, and that's a tough walk for a bunch of little kids. So kids on, their safety and sidewalks is important to me. And like I said, we've been working on that in planning and economic development. So I'd like to see how we would be able to incorporate that, and if that is something that we could get state funding for, federal funding, and make it a safety issue with respect to the children, and that this is state schools and its enhancement of state property, really, I mean, or, you know, how, I'm sure our attorneys are gifted enough to figure out how to phrase eloquently that the responsibility should be shifted for the safety of the kids. I think that would be important. And again, with the master plan, just wanted to throw this in so that our council is prepared, because we're going to be having a joint meeting. Connectivity and sidewalks and walkability was more of a priority than major development. We want to keep the integrity of the city, but one of the things we did want to add are the sidewalks, so the kids can walk safely to school. So that's all I have, and I would appreciate if you could look into those factors that I asked for. Thank you so much.
Very good. We don't have any other comments, but thank you, but thank you once again, Mr. Snyder, for bringing this before council. It sparked some discussion as it was intended to do.
That's exactly what I meant to do, yeah.
And we very much appreciate it, and thank you, once again, thank you for that very clear and concise presentation.
Okay. So in conclusion, we can kind of come up with some of these, you know, obviously, we're going to have to keep talking about this, you know, over the next, next year. Would potentially be one of the next steps, takes us to Public Safety and Infrastructure Committee? Because this is infrastructure and kind of get their sort of take, and maybe a recommendation, full, complete package to bring back to City Council at a point in the future?
Very good.
All right. That's our marching orders for now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, Planning and Economic Development. Item number 2025-0250, request for conditional use approval for Unified Volleyball, a health, recreation, and physical education facility over 5,000 square feet to occupy space within the EC Employment Center zoning district at 1655 West Hamlin Road, located south of Hamlin Road and east of Crooks Road. Brian Kim, United Volleyball Unified Ventures LLC applicant. Ms. Rodiger?
Yes, good evening, President Deal, Vice President, Carlock, Council. From pathways to volleyball, recreation is the theme this evening. I'm joined tonight with Brian Kim and Jason Gambon from United Volleyball, and they are looking to relocate. They're currently on a space in Waterview in one of our industrial parks, and they are looking to move to another location within the city. This one probably better suited for it. It is not internal to an industrial development, so that is good. You can see here the graphic of where it is on the south side of Hamlin. This is going to go to Planning Commission in June with a unanimous recommendation for approval. As you can see from the zoning map, the site is pretty much dead center in our Employment Center District. As I indicated, though, this is kind of a one-off parcel. It's not part of a larger industrial complex. So that's one of the things that we feel very strong about, is preserving the integrity of our industrial parks. This is not part of a park, but a standalone parcel. The request, as indicated, it's for a health, recreation, and physical education facility. As you know, our conditional uses in this district, they're looking to almost double the size of their space to almost 30,000 square feet. They've, you know, parking and access is usually the number one concern we have for this. The site, I think, was designed with recreation in mind originally, and with 99 parking spaces that should be more than adequate when the site is being used at maximum occupancy. They have a maximum of 90 people, which includes the players, along with parents and coaches and other. and other things. They've committed to no tournaments or large competitions or outdoor uses, and they do have a number of accessory uses, along with the courts, in terms of, you know, sitting areas, locker rooms, office spaces, things of that nature. So as a conditional use, you're very well-versed in that conditional uses may be appropriate depending on the conditions. So the question before you this evening is, will this use uphold the, the standards and zoning ordinance, not be detrimental to the surrounding properties? Will be something that is a benefit for, for the community? So happy to answer any questions you may have from a, from a zoning standpoint. And again, we have the gentleman from United Volleyball, if you have any questions about the operation.
Very good. As always, I always ask if the applicants have anything they want to, they want to add, or just introduce themselves, and maybe introduce a little bit about your, what you guys do?
Yeah, my name is Brian Kim. This is Jason Gambon. We're the two owners for Unified Volleyball. We've been in business for 10 years, going on our 11th year, and we've grown to 30-plus volleyball teams. We've been in the Rochester Hills area on Waterview, right around, right off of Adams and 59. So this, this facility will better suit our needs to continue growing and serving our youth volleyball athletes moving forward.
Very good. Thank you so much. Turn over to Mrs. Neubauer.
Thank you, President Deal. So for once, this one was pretty easy when it came to Planning Commission. I was super excited that it was like, everything was in order with respect to the parking. The majority of people there are under 18 anyway, so there's not gonna even be that many drivers driving themselves on parking. It'll be mostly parents dropping off. So with that, I'd like to move it in for approval.
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Neubauer, seconded by Mrs. Moreland. Do we have any additional discussion on this item? I don't see any. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolve that the Rochester City Council hereby approves the conditional use to allow for a health, recreation, and physical education facility, United Volleyball, at 1655 West Hamlin Road, in the EC Employment Center zoning district, based on documents received by the Planning Department on May 11, 2025, with the six findings and one condition as they appear in your packet. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And we're so glad that you decided to continue, you know, your, you know, the expansion here in Rochester Hills.
Thank you.
Next up is public comment for items not on the agenda. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to make comment on an item not, that does not appear on our agenda. We do have one member of the public that did complete a blue public comment card, and it's from Ms. Rondi Yates.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rondi Yates, and I really just wanted to take a minute to publicly recognize one of our workers, Dylan Foss. He works at Van Hoozen Museum, and he gives tours of downtown Rochester with Museum at the Market. He is absolutely wonderful, and everyone there this week was from Rochester Hills, and then just there to hear. A lot of us knew the stories already, but it was such a wonderful experience, and I wanted to publicly, I told him I was gonna do this, and he was like, yeah, right. So I just encourage you all, if you get a chance to do a tour with him, it's Museum at the Market. It was wonderful. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments this evening. I don't see any other public comment for items not on the agenda, so I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by, with, by one motion and without discussion. If any council member or citizen requests discussion of an item, it will be removed from the consent agenda from, for separate discussion. I did have one request to remove one item from the consent agenda. That item is 2025-0283. We will remove that item from the consent agenda and discuss it just immediately after we vote to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. We have a motion by Mrs. Mangioli, seconded by Mrs. Neubauer, to approve the consent agenda, and I will read those items into the, into the record. 2024-0650, approval of minutes, City Council regular meeting, September 23, 2024. 2024-0651, approval of minutes, City Council special meeting, October 7, 2024. 2024-0652, approval of minutes, City Council regular meeting, October 7, 2024. 2025-0279, request for purchase authorization, facilities, blanket purchase order, or contract for on-call painting services at city-owned properties in the amount not to exceed $90,000 through August 31, 2027, General Painting Company LLC, Rochester Hills, Michigan. And 2025-0280, request for approval of a uniform video service local franchise agreement with DirecTV for an additional 10 years. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. And that moves us to item number 2025-0283, request for approval, DPS Engineering, request for approval of a new Metro Act telecommunications right-of-way use permit, bilateral form, EZ Fiber LLC. Mr. Fritz?
Good evening, and thank you, President Deal, Vice President Karlock, members of council, Ms. Hayes and Mr. Snyder. We received a request to, from another telecommunications company to install their fiber optic networks throughout the city, and it's under the Metro Act, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have for us.
Very good. Mrs. Mangioli?
Thank you very much, President Deal. So, Mr. Fritz, I had sent you an email saying I was gonna ask to pull this from the agenda, specifically so we could address this, and I want to thank you again for the answers to my questions that you sent. So again, Clerk Scott, if we could add Mr. Fritz, he's got this one and the TAP grant are all on the same answer, so thank you very much for that. My concern, and after Mr. Blair had shown us the picture of the poles in our cities with multiple wires hanging from it, and this was another consent agenda topic that we pulled, I just wanted to see if we were going to put together a strategic plan on how best to address multiple requests. If I'm a resident, and I don't know which company has fiber in my area, let alone, should I contact EZ, EZ Fiber to connect? Do I contact Xfinity to connect? Do I contact AT&amp;T to connect? Which fiber? So it just seemed extremely confusing from that perspective as a resident, because I could have multiple fiber optics underground, and I wouldn't even know I had more than one to choose from, and that vendor one could be cheaper than vendor two, which could be cheaper than vendor three. So there were just a lot of questions that I had relative to this. I will say, I was pleased to see how much money we generate from having these cables, so go for it, especially seeing that we want to do something with pathways. If you can raise the money by getting more fi-
Put the fiber.
Put the fiber optics, yes, exactly. Build the conduit under the pathway, and we'll just do it that. So, help me with my concerns, and are we looking at doing this more strategically than just having 50 wires in a conduit in the city? And I, as a resident, have no knowledge of what that means.
Well, after you, after you, we had our conversation email today. I did some checking and some inquiries with our right-of-way permit coordinator. He has been in communication with the Public Service Commission, because this is a, this is a, like, like the gas company, and DTE, and the telephone, AT&amp;T, these are, these utilities are governed by the Public Service Commission. They file a request with the state, they get a hearing, and then it's ruled on, and to answer your question, I think, I've looked at the, some of the information, and they said it can be, it's advantageous to residents of the state, because it generates competition, and that's why they, they approve these usually when they come along. I'm not aware of any that have been denied by the MPSC. And Mr. Ryan is here, a colleague of Mr. Chris, because we did send some questions to, because he does, they do review these permits when they, when they get presented to us. So I don't know if he can collaborate on that at all.
Yeah, this is with the, I mean, the, starting back in the early or late 1990s, you know, the federal government has preempted this. They want, they want broadband internet, they want connectivity to the world, to the United States, and they pretty much preempted this. And so the Public Service Commission has the authority in Michigan, but the legislative goal of the country and state is to allow this to occur for competition and for information sharing to citizens at the lowest cost possible.
So will they ever restrict the number of vendors that can run wires in our city?
Not really. I mean, that, that's an issue that can be, if there's some issue here with the, and I understand this is all gonna be underground.
Yes.
So that, you know, because you've, you've got plenty of, you have plenty of wires, but the, this Public Service Commission, under the statute, will, if necessary, between the provider and the community, will mediate and attempt to find out if there's some issue, if there's been some problems with prior right-of-way users, and that not using their right-of-way properly or, or causing problems, then that can be mediated between the Public Service Commission and the, and the provider, if that, if it's that extensive of a problem. And I don't know if that's the case here in Rochester Hills or not, but I was surprised to hear myself they're gonna put it underground, because it's obviously cheaper to put it on the poles that are there already. But I think that's, if they're willing to go to the financial expense to do that, I think that's best for the community to have it underground and not above ground, or an aerial, but if that answers your question.
It does. Do we make the same amount of money off of this, out of every vendor? Because you've got numbers in here of almost 300,000 plus for '22, '23, and '24, as revenue that we've received from the...
Provider.
The providers. So...
Yeah, they get, they, they report to the MPSC how much they install. They, they get, they collect money, and they get, and it gets redistributed to the communities based on the percentage of telecommunications fiber that's been installed in their city. So the more carriers you have, the more you're gonna, you're gonna get from that aspect of it. But we only collect, and it's an MPSC established, we only get a $500 permit fee at the time of application, as it states in here.
Okay.
And that's supposed to cover all of our administrative costs, which sometimes it is a little short, answering all the complaints and responses for restoration and things like that that we have to respond to.
Can we negotiate a higher rate?
Well, it's, it's set by MPSC, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, it's set by the state.
Can we ask the state if we can negotiate a higher rate?
You can ask, but they, they don't want, what they're afraid of, they don't want some patchwork regulations in the country, and they want to make sure that, that the avenue is open for business. And I guess you make it up in, if you, you make it up in the five cents a mile that they pay, which adds up to revenue for the city.
Okay. So for the EZ Fiber is saying they're going to come and do the whole city. Does that mean other vendors are going to say, oh, well, EZ's got it, we don't have to worry about it, we're done, we're not gonna bother coming into Rochester? I mean, because the previous vendor just did the Brooklands area, and I think it was only North Brooklands, not all of it. All right, so how, how many more may come?
I don't know the answer, because it's a, it's, it's an economic decision based on private industry, so we don't know who's coming down the pike at this point. But to answer your question, and I had, we had the same, the same questions you posed to us, so we're gonna be looking into trying to figure out what other communities are doing, and, and work with some, like you mentioned, kind of come up with a plan, how to, how to address these in the future.
Because EZ's not necessarily AT&amp;T, or Xfinity, or any of the other commercial vendors that I know of. So as a homeowner, I can't go to Xfinity and say, hey, can you use EZ's fiber network? Because I know it's brand-new, and it's in my neighborhood, and I want to use that. All I do is go to Xfinity, and they give me a box that may or may not work, so...
Or perhaps they installing it in hopes that another carrier will purchase their infrastructure. I don't, that was posed to me today as a possibility.
So I, I would like us to look at this more on a holistic view, and what the possible pros and cons are for the city, so this way if others come through. I'm guessing we can't say no to them, but I'd like us to have a plan for them when they do come forward.
Yes, saying no is, puts the city in a very difficult spot because of the shot clock issue about the, the time limits placed on the city to make a, make a decision. And they've already, your points are very well-taken, but the point is that the state has looked at this company and allowed them to do business in the state of Michigan. So we're, we're at a disadvantage in trying to challenge that.
But if I already have EZ in there, doing the entire city, do I have to let company two come in if I'm, already know the whole city is covered, and I've met the requirements of having fiber network throughout the entire city?
Well, that's a business decision by the next company, and they may want to put aerial in instead of underground.
Okay.
Because it's cheaper.
So I guess, for me, I'd just like to know if we can make a plan, and if we can, what that plan would be, because this is the second one in probably two or three months that I would like to, I'd like to know, so I don't drag us through. More questions at another meeting. And with that, President Deal, I'll move the resolution in our packet to approve EZ Fiber.
Thank, thank you very much. Motion by Mrs. Mangioli, seconded by Mr. Blair. Next up is Mrs. Moreland.
Thank you, President Deal. I just wondered if, you know, so this is the second one, I know they aren't covering exactly the same areas, but do you get a maximum? I mean, if we end up with, you know, 15 different companies wanting to do this underground, I mean, is there a point at which you can't fit any more underground? Or do they all run the same route? Do you have one big pipe and they run it all, they each run their fiber optics through it? Or how does that work physically?
They're all separate conduit runs. They're, they're plastic or polyethylene pipe, about two or three inches diameter. They just directionally drill it down the block and put boxes wherever services would be located along the properties.
So in my neighborhood, I could just keep getting conduits putting through more and more boxes?
Yeah. That's, we're having the same questions that you are.
Yeah.
So we're gonna be doing some research.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Blair?
Thank you, President Deal. Let me share my screen, please, please. I just wanted to comment on a point that Councilwoman Mangioli mentioned, which is, you know, what do I do when I move? How do I know what is available? When you are researching a place to live, gosh, I hope you're looking into Rochester Hills, we've got a pretty good thing going here, but if you're relocating, I mean, you're checking into school districts, and you're checking into shopping, you can also check out the National Broadband Map. This is a website that shows all the available connectivity options you have for a particular address. So if I put my address in here, everybody knows where I live. You could see I've got AT&amp;T, I've got Starlink, HughesNet, Xfinity, T-Mobile. Wow, as soon as this fiber optic network is built, there'll be another option down here. And I can look, I can click into that, and I can see what the terms are, how the speed is, whether it's wireless, whether it's coax or fiber optic. This is fantastic. Competition in this mark, in this industry is good, because I think it's gonna help improve a lot of the experience. I mean, who, show of hands, who likes the cable company? Who likes the phone company? These are not high satisfaction industries, and I think what residents want a lot of times is just something else, and a lot of these smaller, more regional companies are way easier to deal with. And sometimes, maybe they're even a little bit more expensive, but would you pay 10 bucks more a month to have, you know, to not have to deal with Comcast when it breaks, or when they jack your price up, or when the service technician, you know, loses your CAD or something because they let the door open? You, you want to make a change, right? So this is something that I, I approve, and if anybody can use this website for their benefit, it's broadbandmap.fcc.gov.
President Deal? Thank you very much. I do have one question for you. It's unrelated to this particular, but it does relate to the, to the fiber and the broadband issue. A few months ago, Councilman Blair showed examples of fiber runs that were done on the poles where there were, where they would terminate, and there were coiled-up fiber, excess fiber on the poles. And sadly, ever since he did it, it's one of those things of like, don't think about elephants. Don't think about pink elephants, and that's all I see now, are where these lines terminate, and they see these coils on the utility poles. Is that something within the jurisdiction of the city that we can at least notify and have them correct? Because as, as Mr. Blair pointed out, you know, that's not the way it's supposed to be done. Is that something that we can, because, yeah, there's, he's got a great example up there on the screen, and, and I see these everywhere now, everywhere. It's all I see. I'm just curious, it's just, I know it's, it's off, a little off the topic, because this is an underground conduit, I'm just curious.
No, it's funny you mention that, because we, we do, we've had, we have had some success. Our same permits coordinator who's been dealing with this also deals with all the other private utility companies, and as we are, find out about them, or like you said, looking, looking around for the city for them, and we hear about them, he contacts the companies, and we have had some success with them coming out. A lot of times, they forget about them, or they don't know about them, or they have or they don't know about them, or they have a lot of work order that got, is a mile deep in the backlog. So it does help to, if you notify us, we will look into it. We have had some success.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Wow. Great. Mrs. Mungyoli?
Just real quick, Mr. Bosler, who's an audience member here, he actually had contacted one of the utilities because the cable was hanging so low on the street. I don't want to say you could have played jump rope with it, but you could definitely have pulled on it easily. So I do want to make sure that residents recognize that if they do see cables hanging dangerously low, they can contact the utilities and, and they can personally file a report to make it get fixed. Just so we don't, again, safety first. Want to make sure that we're doing that. And so thank you, Mr. Bosler, for bringing that to our attention. But that gets very dangerous. So thank you again, Mr. Blair. Thank you.
Very good. There's, I don't see any further discussion on this item or public comment related to this item. We have a motion by Mrs. Mungyoli, seconded by Mr. Blair. And I'll read it. Be resolved that the Rochester City Council hereby approves and authorizes the execution of the Bilateral Metro Act right-of-way permit between the City of Rochester Hills and EZ Fiber Texas LLC. Further resolved that the Rochester City Council authorizes the mayor to sign the permit agreement and undertake any other, any and all other necessary and appropriate action in furtherance thereof. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Fritz. Thanks for jumping in there. Let's see, that moves us on to legislative and administrative comments. And we'll kick this one off with Mr. Blair.
Thank you, President Deal. If you would, I told you to turn my screen off, Denise. Could you turn it back on now so we can... You know, I, we receive a weekly summary from the Oakland County Sheriff's Department on the major crimes in the city, and it breaks my heart week after week after week to read about the scams that our residents are falling victim to. And a lot of times, it's the same thing. It's, you know, you get a call from someone who says they work for the government, and you missed a court date, and you need to buy Walmart gift cards. And this, this starts to sound familiar. But there's a whole new type of scam that is making its rounds. And I think on a routine basis, I'm going to bring some of these to the council meetings because it's important that you educate yourselves. This article was published just a few days ago, or a couple, a few weeks ago, the fake closing down of businesses. Have you seen these ads come through your Facebook feed? They tend to look something like this. So sorry, we're closing our store. It's been great serving the community. We, we leave our, with our heads held high because of you, our loyal customers. And it leads you to, you know, a website like this that, you know, where you've got this case of leather backpacks and things. It looks like a pretty decent website. This is completely AI. This entire website is completely fake. That guy is fake. The tools are fake. The bags are real. I'll get to that in a second. But if you buy one of these bags, you're not going to get a custom crafted leather bag. Look what it says here. It says, you know, handcrafted by James with care and precision in his small workshop. Really? Is that true? Because this is, this bag is sold everywhere for a fraction of the price that it's now on sale for. And if you don't know what to look for, you will probably wind up with a subpar product that you can't return. And by the time this website is shut down, another one's going to pop back up. And what's different and unique about these threats is there isn't really a law that you can grab onto to prosecute selling overpriced crap. We see it with stereo equipment. We see it with cars. It's not, it might be illegal to, you know, say you're a police officer, right? It might be illegal to, you know, take gift cards when you say it's for taxes or something, but this is just overpriced crap. And, you know, the tools that people are used to looking for, like maybe broken English, or maybe you go to TrustPilot. Well, look at this. Look at this. It's got a 3.7 review on TrustPilot. And it's kind of funny here. Most of the reviews are five-star reviews. Look at that. And you start to look at them, okay, like there's this review from someone named Felicity Belmont. Really? You Google that name, there's no Felicity Belmont. You search for that name, the first thing that shows up is her review on TrustPilot. It is very difficult to identify these types of scams. So I want to give you just a couple tips to tuck in the back of your mind and maybe run through those the next time you're making an online purchase. The first of which is just look for things that might be a little off about the website. Like I said, it's completely made by computer. So why does it say FAQ twice? That's kind of weird, right? We go to contact us and it's like, what's that little line down there? That's weird. It looks like you zoom way in and you can see that, oh my gosh, there's a address here in Hong Kong. That's peculiar for James in his workshop, right? You go to track your order. Well, this is the track your order page. It doesn't even look right. Name, phone number, and a comment? That's not track my order. So and then you go, okay, look at this web domain, this jamesandrew.com. Well, shoot, the domain was registered four months ago for someone who spent their entire life making leather goods. So all this stuff together tells you it's a scam, but I think you'd agree with me if I said that this looks pretty gosh darn legit, right? This website looks pretty legit. And to know that it's a complete scam and that you're going to see more and more and more of this, and it's going to get more and more compelling as the months and years unfold, I just want to make sure that everybody's doing their diligence. So take away from that what you will. Back to you, President Deal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blair. I don't see any other council legislative comments. So I think I'm going to, if that's okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Snyder. Oh, we don't have any report from the administration?
Nothing from me, President Deal. Thank you.
Very good. You never know. You might have something from administration. Very good. Okay. Then we'll turn it over to Attorney's Report.
President Deal, I appreciate being here this evening. I have nothing further to add.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have nominations and appointments. Item number 2025-0288, appointment of the 2025, 2026 Rochester Hills Government Youth Council. I have to disqualify myself from this item. So I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Vice President Karla.
Thank you, President Deal. I'll read the agenda summary here. City Council at its regular meeting of March 16th, 2005, adopted Resolution RES 0080-2005, establishing the Rochester Hills Government Youth Council, RHGYC, to promote youth involvement, local government, through active participation in the mutual exchange of ideas and experiences. On June 21st, 2021, the bylaws were amended to increase the RHGYC composition from 13 members to 15 members appointed by City Council following the established application and appointment process. The member composition will consist of at least two representatives from each City Council district and five at-large representatives. This year, we're very pleased to mention that we received 37 applications that met the minimum qualifications to be considered. Of the 37 applications received, 11 applicants were from the current youth council members requesting to be reappointed to an additional term on the council. The established application appointment process included the following: submission of an application packet by interested students, which included an application, an essay question, and two letters of recommendation, interviews by the interview team consisting of youth council adult advisor Aaron McKay, City Council President Ryan Deal, and youth council representatives Eliza Pazutti, Jackson Odlowski, and Seon, CEO Yun, Yun Wa. Twenty-six students participated in the interview process. The interview team evaluated the candidates on application quality, adult references, interview, and representation. As in the past years, we continue to be very pleased with the large number of students interested in serving on the Rochester Hills Government Youth Council. Nonetheless, it does make the final selection process difficult. Each applicant was extremely bright and pleasant and could bring something different to and unique to the group. In the end, however, the interview team took into account the composition of the Rochester Hills Government Youth Council District Representation, School Representation, and the number in each graduating year. And we're recommending to council that they appoint 15 students to the youth council again this year. The term of office will be for one year coinciding with the school calendar year beginning on September 1st, 2025, expiring on August 31st, 2026. If all 15 students are appointed, the representation would be as follows. In each of the City Council districts, District 1, three students, two returning, one new student. District 2, six students, five returning, one new student. District 3, two students, both are new. District 4, four students, four returning students. Adam, Rochester Hills Adams would have four representatives. Rochester High would have two representatives, Stony Creek, six representatives. International Academy, two representatives, and Notre Dame Prep, one representative. School grades would be distributed to ninth-grade students, three 10th-grade students, four 11th-grade students, and six 12th-grade students. Therefore, City Council is requested to appoint the following students to a one-year term on the Rochester Hills Government Youth Council, 2025, 2026. Those students are Isabella Blakely from International Academy, Oliver Blakely from Rochester High School, Saichi Danakar from Adams High School, Brennan Deal from Stony Creek High School, Jackson Deal from Stony Creek High School, Lucas DeGrande from Notre Dame Prep Torrey, Kiyoshi Giri from Stony Creek High School, Janelle Hayes from Stony Creek High School, Sasha Joshi from Adams High School, Eliza Pazutti from Adams High School, Dev Shah from International Academy, Sid Sheth from Stony Creek High School, Mohammed Uzar from Rochester High School, Christina Wang from Adams High School, and Siyun Wu from Stony Creek High School. The students and their parents have been invited to the August 11th, 2025 City Council meeting for the swearing-in ceremony. Do we have a motion to approve these nominations? Motion by Mr. Blair, seconded by Mrs. Mungyoli. I will read the resolution. Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby concurs with the recommendation of the Rochester Hills Government Youth Council interview team and appoints all of the before-named students to the 2025-2026 term, beginning September 1st, 2025, and ending August 31st, 2026. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President Karla. Let's, next up, under new business, we're moving on to new business. Item number 2023-0353, rescind City Council Resolution of Intent Relative to Special Police Millage. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you again, and good evening, President Deal, Vice President Karla, City Council, and Mrs. Hayes. Presented before you tonight's request to rescind a prior City Council Resolution of Intent Relative to Funding Police Service, which was first approved by City Council initially in May of 2012, and then reaffirmed most recently in July of 2023. These resolutions of intent stated that the City Council intends to offset any increase needed in the police millage with an equal and corresponding decrease to the city's general operating millage, so that no net millage increase to city taxpayers would result from the increased in the police millage. Now, in November of 2023, Rochester Hills voters approved the combination and renewal of two expiring police millages, one and two, into one new combined police millage, starting in fiscal year 2025 this year, for 10 years through fiscal year 2034, with a total authorized levy of 3.4864 mil. Then, more recently, in November of 2024, or September of 2024, the Rochester Hills City Council approved the current police budget or millage levy at 2.418 mil. And this is to fund police services in fiscal year 2025. The city had anticipated a 10% increase in the Oakland County Sheriff's Office contract rates, which did cause an increase to the police millage by .1476. And the general operating millage levy was correspondently reduced, so that no net millage increase to city taxpayers resulted from the new and renewed and increased police millage in fiscal year 2025. Then, in December of 2025, city was informed that the Oakland County Board of Commissioners had approved increases to the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, we'll call them OCSO from here on out, contractual rate increase of approximately 36% over the next three years, 2025 through 2027 contract, including a 17.9% increase in year one, followed by back-to-back 9% increases in years two and three. This was an increase far greater than any community contracting for Oakland County Sheriff's Office policing services, including the city of Rochester Hills could have reasonably anticipated. And running through the calculations, by year three of the existing OCSO contract, an annual budget shortfall of approximately $2.4 million per year is forecasted. So what we did in the first part of this year to address these significant OCSO contractual increases approved by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners in December of 2025, the city explored numerous options to fund policing services, including, A, or number one, decrease the number of OCSO officers by approximately $2.4 million per year to maintain the same bottom-line millage rate. Number two, decrease the number of city general fund staff by $2.4 million to, per year, to maintain the same bottom-line city millage rate, utilize fund balances and maintain the same bottom-line city millage rate temporarily. Number four, ask voters to approve a new and additional police millage to address the OCSO rate increases. And number five, rescind the existing Resolution of Intent Relative Policing Services. This would allow an increase to the approved police millage levy within its previously authorized limits and would not have an equal and corresponding decrease to the city's general operating millage. Option number one, that was estimated to result in the decrease in the number of OCSO officers from currently 65 officers down to 55 officers, a net reduction of 10 officers or 15%. This would maintain the same bottom-line city millage rate. However, the reduction in OCSO deputies would be anticipated to reduce public safety levels in the city moving forward. Option two was estimated to result in the decrease of the number of city general fund staff from currently 100 staff members down to 75 staff members, a net reduction of 25 staff members or 25%. This would maintain the same bottom-line millage rate. However, the decrease to general fund staffing levels in departments such as parks, clerks, building, planning, HR assessing, and the mayor's office was anticipated to reduce, reduce levels of service in the city moving forward. Option number three, that was a utilization of fund balances. This was estimated in the, to result in the elimination of many planned parks and facility infrastructure projects moving forward, and was anticipated to use all remaining capital improvement fund fund balance by the year 2026, and all remaining general fund balance by the year 2030. This would temporarily maintain the same bottom-line millage rate for a few years until those fund balances are depleted, at which point either the OCSO or general fund staffing levels would need to be reduced, similar to options one and two, or a police, a new millage increase would be needed. Option number four was the new and additional police millage. It did draw some concerns that it could create confusion by city voters who recently approved the renewal of the existing police millage in November of 2023, less than two years ago. And ultimately, option number five is recommended, as it will continue to, and this would be the rescind the existing Resolution of Intent. A, it would continue to fund the current level of 65 OCSO officers. There is still ample room within the approved police millage that was at 3.4864 to fund police services into the foreseeable future. It would continue to fund the current level of general fund staffing and planned parks and infrastructure projects. It will not draw down our fund balances to imprudent levels with really no solid plans on how to address the structural deficit in 2030 and beyond, and would not confuse voters who recently approved a police millage in November 2023 with ample millage room yet to be levied. It is currently projected that the net increase needed in the police millage to break even, i.e. revenues equal expenditures in year 2027, the final year of this current contract, is an increase of 0.4344 mils, or a little over four tenths of a mil. This would take the current 4.218 police millage in this current year, 2025, to 2.8524 millage levy in 2026 and beyond at that same level. The bottom-line millage rate is projected, would be projected to increase from the current 10.8473 mils this year to 11.2817 mil in 2026, a bottom-line increase of that 0.4344 mil or approximately 4%. This would equate to an increase of approximately $86 per year for a household with a $400,000 home. Now, interesting, at the 11.28 mil city millage level, the city of Rochester Hills would still remain as the third lowest millage rate in all cities within Oakland County, the population of over 5,000, trailing over only the population of over 5,000, trailing over only Troy and Novi. Interesting enough, both Troy and Novi have 1 mil increases planned for their November election, and if Novi's 1 mil increase is approved by their voters, then they would move to 11.54 mil, and the city of Rochester Hills would then move back into the number two spot of all cities within Oakland County, only trailing the city of Troy by about four tenths of a mil. Number four on that list, besides Troy, Novi, and Rochester Hills, number four is the city of Rochester, and they have a millage rate of 12.8. Just previously mentioned, our new millage rate might go up to right around 11.28, so the city of Rochester Hills would still have a millage rate that will be over 1.5 mil less than the city of Rochester. Further, it's anticipated that this new police millage levy, the city will be able to sustain the police fund at the current OCSO staffing levels through the year 2030, the final year of the next three-year contract. If the next OCSO contract increases approved by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners are approximately 2 and, or 5 and 1/4% per year over the next three-year contracts, around 15 and 3/4% total. Any proposed police millage dollar increase will flow directly into the police fund and can only be used for eligible police fund activities, which is almost exclusively related to the cost of the OCSO contract. None of this additional police funding will flow to any other city fund besides the police fund. Now, unfortunately, if the police millage is increased for this next year in fiscal year 26, this would mark the first time the city has increased the city portion of its bottom-line millage rate since 2015. And at that time, the fire millage was presented to voters and was approved to increase and hire additional firefighters, full-time firefighters, to then move our city to a full 24/7 coverage at all five of our fire stations. The OPC, they recently increased their millage rate back in 2021, from 0.23 mils to 0.32 mils, and the library recently increased their millage, just this current year, in 2025, by 0.39 mils. Ultimately, city administration and the city council, we have been put in a very difficult position of responding to the significant 30% contractual cost increases that were imposed by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. Now, while the intent of both city council and administration was to hold the bottom-line millage rate steady year over year, the alternative of reducing police officers by 15% or cutting city staff by 25% would lead to noticeable decline in public safety and/or city service levels. And deferring all parks and facility capital projects and using up any available fund balances is really not a sustainable or long-term solution. Therefore, the recommendation to rescind the existing Resolution of Intent Relative Police Services will allow an increase in the police millage within the level previously authorized by voters in 2023, now keep the general operating levy status quo, and that is presented as the most fiscally responsible option to preserve the services our residents expect, and to ensure the city's financial stability through the year 2030. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions on this very important matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Snyder. And as you, as you kind of closed your comments, you put it very well, this is a very important matter, it's very important to the council. As Ms. Mungiole stated earlier, and she sits on our strategic planning committee, public safety is our number-one priority. It's important for residents to understand, I think, why we're talking about this right now, you know, in July of 2025, in the middle, more or less, of our budget cycle, right before we get ready to talk about next year's budget, as we start sitting down in August to start talking about the following year's budget. As you indicated, and let me give a little, our budget is typically completed by September, takes effect on January 1st of the following year. Oakland County's budget is usually, they work on a fiscal year that runs from October 1st to October 1st. So, Oakland County voted in December of 2024, I believe, with respect to these millage increases. This was after Oakland County's budget was approved for the year. Also might be just coincidental that it was after the election, but who's to say? And they voted to substantially increase the police, the cost of, you know, the officers. We will increase the, if we are, what we're being asked to do is to increase what we are paying for police service without any additional police service. We will be doing this simply to keep you as safe as you are today. In effect, what the county has done is made its residents less safe, because every dollar that we have to spend, every additional dollar that we spend on public safety, is, we're basically, you pull it out of one pot and put it into another. It's money, it's, you know, this is money coming out of the taxpayers' pockets with zero additional public safety benefit to them. But, once again, we are between a rock and a hard place. This was done after our budget was already complete, after we were ready, and we used anticipated funding levels, which were, as you normally do, structurally, you know, you always build in a structural surplus, this was no exception. But this increase was well beyond our built-in structural surplus. So, for those people at home who might be confused why we're sitting outside of the normal budget process and talking about police funding, and outside of the, you know, it's, this was something that was done after Oakland, both Oakland County's budget and our budget were completed. Now, I assume that Oakland County did not have this additional police funding, or police cost increase into their budget, which was probably something that they had to adjust their budget to include and figure out how they were going to spend that money, because make no mistake, if the county had budgeted without this increase, they were operating without this, they were able to operate without this increase. They had a budget within which they could do it. They've just chosen to increase it on our backs as a windfall to their budget to spend, and what they are doing, by the way, is spending your money the way they see fit. Because we're going to be increasing taxes to get you back to where you were, and they're going to absorb that money into their budget and spend your money, as they see fit. Mrs. Mungiole.
Thank you, President Deal, and thank you for that summary for what we've been going through. Council has had closed sessions to talk about the contract and what the implications were. We've had Commissioner Brendan Johnson here, and I want to say, we asked him a lot of tough questions for over 90 minutes. I don't remember ever getting an answer to any of the questions that we asked him. As you mentioned, safety is our first priority as a city. That is something that we're very proud of, we've won awards for, and we want to make sure that our community remains a safe place to live. I also stated earlier that I do not like raising your taxes, and I will say, our city has been fiscally prudent, they've been able to answer pages and pages of my questions over the years relative to how we are spending our money, and the only increase that we've had in revenue from a general fund perspective is because your assessments have gone up, not because we have raised a tax millage. So this will be my first time in six years that I have to actually raise taxes that were not voted upon by the voters. All of the other millages that Mr. Snyder mentioned, between the library, the OPC, the countywide ones, those were all voter-approved, and they chose to make that decision. This decision is one that rests on me as a leader, I have to make that hard decision on whether or not I want to put that standard of not raising taxes against safety first, and what's most important for our residents. $86 may not seem like a lot, you escrow it near mortgage payment, you know, people will say, oh, it's just one less coffee at Starbucks, or one less pizza from your favorite pizza parlor. But this is going to be on top of other taxes that are going up, as well as the county having passed approved millages, I mean, it's approved millages, you've got the transportation millage, you've got a parks millage. There is a section of our city that had four voter-approved tax millages, approved in one year, between parks, roads, library, and then the Avondale School District bond. Four millage increases in one section of our city, but it was the voters who chose. I'm not happy with having to make this decision, I'm not happy with having told the voters I wasn't going to raise their taxes, but I'm also even equally unhappy, more than that, with the county. If there is any resident that wants to have a conversation about this, I will be more than happy to have that conversation with them as to why this is necessary. I will also give you the names and addresses and phone numbers, well, names and phone numbers, of your elected county commissioners that cover the Rochester Hills area, because it is Commissioner Brendan Johnson, Commissioner Mike Spiz, and Commissioner Mike Gingel, who are the three commissioners that cover our area, and they can have a conversation with them. The fact that there is so little resident oversight of what the commissioners do is that they feel that it can do many things without any repercussions, and they don't have another election till 2028. So with that, I'm not happy about this. I do want to ask Clerk Scott, Mr. Snyder put together a very lengthy and comprehensive answers to my questions, some of which he covered in the presentation, but I would appreciate it if we made that part of the record, because this way, the residents can see what the cost of those five options are, and what the impact would be to our city, because cutting sheriff's deputies is not an option. Cutting our staff, when we truly are operating at a very lean staff, and we start talking about the, having succession planning for our staff, it's important for us to have people around to be able to fill positions of people leaving, so cutting staff is not a prudent thing for us to do. To eliminate all of the work that our staff has done in proposals and master plans for a variety of different functional areas of our city, again, is not a good thing for us to do. We have beautiful parks, but we also have parks that need help, much like our pathways need help. We need to not decimate our plans, because the county commissioners decided arbitrarily, after the last hour, to increase our cost of our contract. Our last one was to use our fund balances, which is much like eliminating all of the work that we want to do for the city, then we are bare bones, and we would be coming back and asking for a tax increase, whether it be something that the council passes here, or it's something the voters have to do, we would still have to go explain to you why we were asking you to raise the millage. So, with all that, I am not happy with this decision, Mr. Snyder. I am very grateful for the work that you put into answering my questions, for the work that our staff has done to make sure we have a very well-balanced and presented budget, and if people have questions about our budget, they can join us on the third Monday in August for our budget workshop, so they can ask a lot more questions in that lengthy meeting, where we'll go through this. So, thank you. With that, President Deal, I move the resolution in our packet to rescind the City Council Resolution on the Intent Relative to the Special Police Millage.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Mrs. Newpower.
Thank you, President Deal. I just wanted to put a couple things on the record. I'm not sure which council person said it, but we did ask Mr. Johnson, who was the representative that voted for this increase for our area, several questions. His answer was, I will get back to you, because I don't know. You know, when we are asked questions as council, we do, even if we don't know the answer, we get back to the person, we respond. We've never, I've never heard back from him. I just wanted to put on the record that the Oakland County commissioners have spent $4.27 million on construction of a building that they, that was budgeted to be a $36.9 million project, and they just canceled that. So, $4.27 million is gone, and we don't know where that is. I think there needs to be, one of the things we asked for is a forensic accounting of how Oakland County is spending the money that we continuously are being taxed on, whether it's the transportation, that I believe less than 1% of our population is using that we pay for, or the Oakland County park that we pay for that we don't have. I still don't know those answers, kind of burns me up, that I don't know those answers when we are contributing to all these other communities and on Oakland County's budget that we pay for, but we don't know. If they're billing us and our officers for new uniforms every year, and our officers are not getting new uniforms every year, I want to know why. If a TASER contract was entered into in a special agreement based on a special price, and that that contract was increased three months later, I want to know why. I want to know why they think it's okay for us to cut our officers, it's not only a public safety issue, it's an officer safety issue. We can't have less officers protecting other officers in high-risk situations. Oakland County decided to make this decision after the Splash Pass shooting, they made this decision after the MSU shooting, they made this decision after we lost Officer Reckling, they made this decision when we were in a bit of a crisis. They made this decision, and it forced us to eliminate a task force, a special task force, that was going to be protecting our citizens who were being targeted in high-end robberies. The commissioners that moved for this decision are not Rochester Hills residents, they're commissioners that are living in cities that have their own police department, and had no skin in the game. When we tried to do what we wanted to do in order to make this situation public, so people could understand what was happening, we were threatened with retaliation from the county, and we saw how they're retaliating against other counties and other cities for the pushback on trying to understand why they did this. Mr. Deal, President Deal insinuated that it could be related to the election. I'm not as gentle as he is, it is related to the election, it was totally punitive, that's why it's important for us to do our research into who we're voting for, and not just vote down party lines, and not just look at who the governor or the president is, look at how these people are voting. When we had Mr. Johnson in here, he made a statement that the Oakland County, he was proud that the Oakland County commissioners had gifted $50,000 to a special needs development here, that frankly, our planning commission and economic planning department worked tirelessly to get in here, and it was not a gift, it was a loan that they're charging interest on, and I confirmed that. I was able to get that answer, Mr. Johnson was not. David Woodward and David Coulter are responsible for this, and those who voted are responsible for this. I agree with Ms. Mungiole, I hate raising taxes. We do in Rochester Hills have some of the lowest taxes, but we do pay more because of the Oakland County taxes that we're being billed on, and we have to be responsible for that, too. I will never vote to cut police staff, I will never vote not to support our first responders, I will never vote not to take the school officers out of our school systems. We do get the reports of what happens on a regular basis, and so many things happen in the schools that nobody knows about, and if this is something we have to do, we have to do. But this was a unilateral contract that the Oakland County commissioners had us by the throat, we had no choice. My concern, and I've said this over and over again, is after three years, how can we stop them from doing this again? I don't know the answer to that, I would like to sit down with our council to do that, maybe have another closed session, maybe talk to the Michigan Municipal League of Attorneys to see what we can do, maybe join forces with the other counties that have been contributed, are participating in the same problem, having the same problem. By God's grace, you- By God's grace, you budget enough and take care of enough and are transparent enough in our budget that we have the ability to do because you plan ahead, but what's Pontiac going to do? What's, what's, what are the other, and are we going to start paying for Pontiac's officers? Are we going to start paying for other municipalities' officers? I want an accounting from Oakland County. If I'm paying for 65 officers or 55 officers, I want their names on a paper with the positions that they work. I don't think that's too hard. I think that's low-hanging fruit, and I think that's the least they can do. Thank you.
Mr. Blair.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was buzzed in. Nothing, Mr. Deal?
Very good, thank you very much. You know, I, just kind of wrapping up the comments of the rest of the council, I am a little, I am a little concerned, because this did kind of come to us with no prior notification after the Oakland County budget had been completed. And then, as I understand it, they also increased fees for assessing services. Now, that doesn't impact us, because we do our, we have our assessing in-house, but a number, I've read articles that a number of different communities are, have just saw their, their assessing services by Oakland County raised, in some cases by double-digit amounts.
Correct.
And so what I'm concerned about is that this problem may not be a one-off. I'm concerned about it being systemic, that if, if there's a, if there's a, there seems, if you start to see a pattern developing, and so I just think that, I kind of, I think it was, I think it was Mrs. Newpower who said, you know, "We really need to strategically look ahead about how we're going to provide police services in the future." I, I do think we have to strategically look at that, because we can, we can, the, the agreement and, and working with Oakland County has always worked out very, very well, and it's always been a wonderful and beneficial relationship between the city and the Sheriff's Department and Oakland County. But you have to have, you have to have reliable actors on both sides in order for those things to work. And so that, what I'm concerned about is, is I'm starting to see a pattern of the county raising revenue on the backs of the municipalities that, that rely on it for services, and the only way that I see as a reliable way out of that is to start looking for alternatives. So I, that's a strategic concern of mine moving, moving forward, but that is kind of a little bit neither here nor there at this point. But we, oh, we do have other council comments. I must have listed other comments. Mrs. Morland.
Thank you, President Deal. And I, too, am concerned with the pattern that they've created. You know, they had their budget, they were set in September, they waited till after their parks millage was passed, knowing full well they were going to do this to us in December, requiring us to raise this tax at this point, raise our millages to cover what they're requiring of us for our sheriffs, and hit us up recently for water. They are going to impact our water rates to pay for some of their infrastructure that they hadn't done. And I agree that we need to really be watching their accounting, because some of this money, it wasn't confirmed by our county commissioner that this will be going to the sheriffs, that it will be going into their general fund, is what we were told. So those are some things that are just extremely questionable, and I agree with, with all of my fellow council members, that I have great concerns in what will be happening next year and the year after, and of course, in three years. So thank you, Joe, for being so diligent, for putting us into a position where we can handle this, we can keep our residents safe, because without the, the financial forecasting that you've done over the past decade, we would not be here. So I thank you for that. But I do encourage residents to be watching the county commissioners, to watch their budget, to ask questions, and I encourage everyone to do that. Thank you, President Deal.
Thank you very much. Yeah, to be, to be fair, Joe, I'm sorry, Mr. Snyder, really and truly, I mean, you were kind of brought in to, to manage this kind of as a, as a crisis situation, so I'd, hats off to you and your team, you know, for ever, all the work that you did to kind of, to kind of help us navigate through this and find a path that we can do this, you know, on, on the timeframe that we are. So I just wanted to, yeah, hats off to you and your team. And we did get one answer from Commissioner Johnson in terms of when, when specifically we were asked what they had in mind with respect to the, to the additional funds, and my kids happened to be watching that meeting, and they could tell when their dad, they could tell when their dad gets frustrated, because the answer was, he goes, and I asked, "What, did you have something in mind that you were spending this money on?" And his words were, "We're keeping our options open. Isn't that what you do?" To which I responded, "No. We have a 10-year capital improvement plan. I can tell you exactly where Rochester Hills is spending its money for the next 10 years, and with our seven-year financial forecast, I can tell you exactly where we're getting that money from. We do not keep our options open. We do not keep our doors open when it comes to dealing with other people's money." But we do have a motion on, we do have a motion by Mrs. Mancioli, seconded by Mr. Blair, and I'll read that into the record. "Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council rescinds the June 24, 2023 Resolution of Intent Relative to the Funding of Police Services." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Snyder.
Thanks, City Council.
Moving on to item number 2025-0282, "Request for Purchase Authorization: Facilities Purchase Order Contract for the Demolition of Two Residential Homes, 3514 South Livernoye and 694 South Rochester Road, and the Velodrome Located in Bloomer Park in, in the Amount of $115,500 with a 10% Project Contingency in the Amount of $11,550 for a total not to exceed project amount of $127,050. International Construction Inc., Shelby Township, Michigan." Ms. Fazenko.
Good evening, President Deal, Vice President Karlock, City Council, and Mr. Snyder. The items in front of you today are to, for the demolition of two separate properties of, or two separate homes on two separate parcels that the city had acquired late 2023 and in 2024, and then the Velodrome that is no longer being utilized at the Bloomer's Park. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Oh, we got a motion by Mr. Blair, seconded by Mrs. Newpower. I don't see any discussion or public comment on this item, so I'll go ahead and read the "Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes purchase order contract for the demolition of two residential homes, 3514 South Livernoye and 694 South Rochester Road, and the Velodrome to International Construction Inc., Shelby Township, Michigan, in the Amount of $115,500 with a 10% Project Contingency in the Amount of $11,550 for a total not to exceed project amount of $127,050, and further authorize the procurement manager to execute an agreement on behalf of the city. It is further resolved that the city's acceptance of the proposal and approval of the award of a contract shall be contingent and conditioned upon the parties entering into an execution of a written agreement acceptable to the city." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that moves us to 2025-0183, "Request for Purchase Authorization: DPS Engineering Increase to the Blanket Purchase Order Contract for the 2025 Concrete Road Replacement Program for the Added Scope to Include Approximately 400 Feet of Additional Concrete Paving on Pheasant Ring Drive in the Amount of $151,174.13 for a revised total not to exceed project amount of $3,284,511.48 to Koala T Construction, Holly, Michigan." Mr. Fritz.
Thank you, once again. We are requesting an increase to the blanket purchase order for the concrete program. When the engineering team decides on where to distribute our work, we kind of spread it throughout the city, and on Pheasant Ring, when they mobilized, they realized that there's a section adjacent to it that was, well, poorer, was slightly less poor than the area that had been identified, and they said, "Why can't we just extend it?" So we have the asphalt programs wrapping up, and there was remaining unused budget, so we decided to try to reallocate it. So with that, we're asking for your approval.
Very good, thank you very much. We do have one public comment on this item, Mr. Michael Watson.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm here for the Pheasant Ring Homeowners Association. Really, Mr. Fritz, thank you, your recommendation is, you know, we agree with, and I wanted to thank the mayor, Tracy Bayland, I hope I got her name right, and Congresswoman, Councilwoman, I just promoted you, Carol Morland, for very quickly addressing this situation, which came up just three weeks ago, and I think this is good proof that government can move swiftly. So that's what we're hoping for. So I'm here, I know this very, I know this in detail, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to chime in, but thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mrs. Morland.
Thank you, President Deal. And when you look at the map of this, everything around it is being done except for that one little section, so I agree, Mr. Fritz, thank you. It just makes fiscal sense and common sense to do this 400-foot area. So I thank you for bringing this to us, and with that, I move the motion in the packet.
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Morland, seconded by Mrs. Newpower. I don't see any further public comment or council comment on this item, so I'll read the resolution. "Resolved that the City of Rochester Hills," or I'm sorry, that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes an increase to the blanket purchase order contract for the 2025 Concrete Road Replacement Program for the Added Scope to Include Approximately 400 Feet of Additional Concrete Paving on Pheasant Ring Drive to Quality Construction Inc., Holly, Michigan, in the Amount of $151,174.13 for a revised total not to exceed project amount of $3,284,511.48, and further authorize the procurement manager to execute a contract amendment on behalf of the city." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that moves us to 2025-0265, "Request for City of Rochester Hills Resolution in Support and to Commit Matching Fund for the M-150 Non-Motorized Connectivity Project." Mr. Fritz.
Thank you, once again. The Rochester Road, M.Rochester Road Replacement Project coming up in 2027, we're applying for a Transportation Alternatives Program grant to extend pedestrian bike path across the M-59 Bridge, and this is requesting your authorization to apply for the TAP grant. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Very good, thank you very much. We have a motion by Mrs. Newpower, seconded by Vice President Karlock. I don't see any public comment or discussion on this item, and so I will read the resolution. "Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council authori," oh wait, we do, Mrs. Mancioli.
I just wanted to make sure that the answers that Mr. Fritz had given me earlier were combined on the same document, and I just want to make sure that they are included with this portion of the agenda, so thank you.
Very good. We can make sure these and all the other previous questions be included as part of that very well. "Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council authorizes Mayor Brian Barnett to act as applicant agency's agent during the project development and sign a project agreement upon receipt of a grant funding award, and that the City of Rochester Hills commits to owning and operating the constructed facility and commits to funding implementing a maintenance plan program over the design life of the sidewalks, including the portion on the M-150 Bridge over M-59 that is constructed with TAP funds, and it is further resolved that the City, that the Rochester Hills City Council certifies that the financing is secured, available, and committed to use in constructing the project. This includes matching funds, non-participating funds, if applicable, and cash flow available for a locally let project." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, we have the salary recommendation files, so we'll start with 2025-0290, "Pay Recommendation for the Department Director's Variable Performance Discretionary Pay 2025."
Good evening, President Deal, Vice President Karlock, and members of council. I am going to get a little cozy here. I got the next seven items. So as you presented, I'm here tonight to request your approval for, of the HRTRC, which is the Human Resources Technical Review Committee, a recommendation regarding the mayor's discretionary performance pay budget for directors in fiscal year 2025. The HRTRC met on June 24 of 2025 and engaged in comprehensive discussion and review of the appropriate information provided by the administration regarding directors' performance pay. This thorough vetting process led to a consensus among the committee members to recommend an increase in the performance pay budget from $15,000 to $20,000. So this proposed $5,000 increase not only restores the historical performance pay, which was in place from 2003 to 2008, but it also accounts for the impact of increased inflation since the last adjustment in 2017, so ensuring the effectiveness of the performance pool. So this allocation allows the mayor to provide discretionary performance pay as a direct acknowledgement of directors' contributions throughout the year. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. Let's see, we have a motion by Mr. Blair, seconded by Vice President Karlock. I don't think we have any discussion on this item, so I'll go ahead and read the resolution. "Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby concurs with the recommendation of the Human Resources Technical Review Committee to increase the budget for variable performance pay for department directors in 2025 to $20,000." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Next up is 2025-0291, "Salary Recommendation for Boards and Commissions in 2026." Mrs. Insana.
Thank you. So you will hear a very reoccurring theme throughout this evening's presentation. So again, in, you know, collaboration with the HRTRC and their recommendation regarding the compensation for members of boards and commissions for fiscal year 2026, the HRTRC reviewed this matter on June 24, and after discussion, the committee concurred with maintaining the current per diem compensation for chairpersons and citizen members for meetings and attendance, as indicated on the agenda. So therefore, we recommend that the City Council approve maintaining the current per diem rate of $100 for chairpersons and $90 for citizen members of the named boards and commissions, and a rate of $100 for members of the Board of Review for fiscal year 2026.
Very good, thank you very much. Mrs. Mancioli.
Thank you, President Deal. Just for the residents that may be curious, the HRTRC is the Human Resources Technical Review Committee. I sit on that with Councilman Morland and Councilman Karlock, and so we had ample opportunity when that committee met back at the end of June to answer, ask a lot of questions, get all of our information answered as part of that technical review process. So that's why you're not going to see me asking a lot of questions at this point, because I got to do it all ahead of time, and I don't have to add it to the agenda because, or the meeting minutes, because it's a separate committee. With that, I move the resolution for the salary recommendation for boards and commissions.
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Mancioli, seconded by Mrs. Morland. Seeing no further discussion or public comment on this item, "Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby concurs with the recommendation of the Human Resources Technical Review Committee to maintain the current per diem compensation of $100 for chairpersons and $90 for citizen members of boards and commissions per meeting attended in fiscal year 2025 for the following boards and commissions: Construction Fire Prevention Code Board of Appeals, Historic District Commission, Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, Sign Board of Appeals, Board of Review. It is further resolved that the 2026 per diem for the Board of Review will also remain unchanged for one, from, at $100 per, for members." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Now moving on to item number 2025-0292, "salary recommendations for City Council." Mrs. Insana.
Thank you. So remaining consistent with that theme, which, which does underscore the city's commitment to maintaining internal equity across various positions and pay grades, is an item that I'm going to further discuss. This is one of three this evening. In that, you know, in-depth conversation with the Human Resources Technical Review Committee, as you'll hear me refer to as HRTRC, the recommendation is to move forward to council regarding the 2026 compensation for members of city council. As you may all recall, in the fall of 2024, our largest employee group, GELC, Local 1984, which was previously AFSCME 2491, was, they did ratify a contract with a 2.75 general adjustment for fiscal year 2026, and following a review of other ratified contracts and further discussion with our committee, the committee reached a consensus to recommend a 2.75 general adjustment to the salary schedule for city council positions as well for 2026. So this adjustment ensures consistency among So this adjustment ensures consistency among our employee groups. Specifically, the city council's president base salary would be nine thousand four hundred sixty-six and fifteen cents, and city council members' two thousand and twenty-six base salary proposed would be seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six and twenty-one cents. We recommend that city council accept HRTRC's recommendation and approve this two-point-seven-five general adjustment for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you very much, Ms. Insana. As you can see, nobody's getting rich from this. Let's see, we have a motion by Mrs. Morland, seconded by Vice President Karlock. Seeing no, for the public comment on this item or, or discussion, it is, I need to hit the right button here. There we go. "Resolved that the Rochester Hills City Council concurs with the committee's recommendation to increase the base pay by two-point-seven-five percent, consistent with the unified salary schedule for council president at nine thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifteen cents per year, and base pay for council members at seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cents per year." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. And that moves us on to item number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-two-nine-three, "salary recommendation for department directors' general adjustment twenty-twenty-six." Ms. Insana.
Thank you. So similar to the previous recommendation, you know, I am requesting at the approval of the HRTRC committee recommendation for a two-point-seven-five general adjustment to the salary schedule for department directors for two thousand and twenty-six. As mentioned, we've met on June twenty-fourth to discuss these compensation recommendations. I did brief the committee on the city's unified salary schedule. You all have been a part of this process, and actually going back to the two thousand and eighteen McGrath Compensation Study, when we created this unified salary schedule amongst all pay grades and positions, the, the emphasis was on our commitment to the above-market-average pay philosophy and maintaining the internal equity pay amongst, again, the, all of our employee groups, union and non-union. So a two-point-seven-five general adjustment, as proposed, will align with both the seven-year forecast budget and the previously ratified GELC Local nineteen-eighty-four contract. So the HRTRC reached consensus to recommend the two-point-seven-five general adjustment to the base salary for directors. In addition, step increases for their respective positions. This adjustment amounts to forty thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eleven cents for a total base salary budget of one million five hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and eleven cents. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very, very good, thank you very much. We have a motion by Mrs. Morland, seconded by Mrs. Newbauer. I don't see any discussion or public comment on this item, so I'll read the resolution. "Resolved that two, that two-point-seven-five percent in the amount of forty thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eleven cents shall be added to the twenty-twenty-six base salary budget for department directors, beginning the total twenty-twenty-six base salary budget to one million five hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and eleven cents." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. And that brings us to twenty-two-five-dash-zero-two-nine-four, "salary recommendation for directors' equity adjustment twenty-twenty-six." Ms. Insana.
Presented before you is actually a status quo recommendation regarding the equity adjustments for department directors. There, we have, it is targeted and budgeted for two thousand and twenty-seven completion of a comprehensive compensation study for all of our employee union groups and non-union groups outside of fire. So at, you know, you can expect, I guess, at a later point in time, more discussion on that matter, so at this time, there is no individual department director adjustments being recommended.
It has been about ten years, right?
Yes.
Since the last, I seem to remember the last, when the, I was coming in when that one was getting completed. We have a motion by Vice President Karlock, seconded by Mrs. Morland. "Seeing no further discussion or public comment on this item, resolve that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby concurs with the recommendation to authorize no individual market equity adjustments for the department director positions in twenty-twenty-six." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. And that moves us to twenty-two-five-dash-zero-two-nine-five, "salary recommendation for the mayor's general adjustment twenty-twenty-six." Ms. Insana.
So as presented to HRTRC, and, and again, with all of our employee groups, city council proposed compensation recommendations and the department director salary recommendations, we, we presented a two-point-seven-five general adjustment to the HRTRC committee, and they unanimously agreed to also, you know, align this with the mayor's, to maintain that internal equity and consistency among our unified salary schedules. So the HRTRC accepted this recommendation, ensuring that unified salary schedule remains competitive. So this adjustment amounts to four thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-three cents for a base total salary for two thousand and twenty-six of one hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six and twenty-three cents. And that is being recommended before you today to accept the HRTRC's recommendation.
Very good, thank you very much. We have a motion by Mrs. Morland, seconded by Mrs. Newbauer. I don't see any further discussion or public comment on this item, and I'll read the resolution. "Resolved that two-point-seven-five percent in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-three cents shall be added to the twenty-twenty-six salary budget for the position of mayor for an annual base salary of one hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Next up, twenty-two-five-dash-zero-two-nine-six, "recommendation for twenty-twenty-six adjustment to the monthly vehicle allowance for mayor." Ms. Insana.
Thank you. Presented in the agenda packet, I'd like to request city council approval of the HRTRC's recommendation to increase the mayor's monthly vehicle allowance for two thousand and twenty-six. The HRTRC met in June to discuss the mayor's monthly vehicle allowance, which has remained at five hundred and fifty dollars per month since two thousand and twelve. The committee reviewed current vehicle expenses and determined that increasing the allowance to eight hundred and fifty dollars per month aligns with market rates for comparable positions and mirrors our standard costs for other city vehicle eligible positions. This adjustment offers significant financial savings and administrative benefits to the city by eliminating the need for the city to manage insurance, registration, fuel cost, and by avoiding depreciation risk and maintenance expenses. So importantly, there would also be no city liability for personal use of the vehicle. So therefore, the HRTRC recommends increasing the mayor's vehicle monthly allowance from five hundred and fifty dollars to eight hundred and fifty dollars per month, effective the first pay in two thousand and twenty-six and each year thereafter.
Thank you very much. And it's, it's important to note, so this, this has been in the budget, like, it's always been in there.
Correct.
It just never gets, it just hasn't been increased since two thousand and twelve.
Yes.
And so now we're just kind of bringing it in line with inflation, more or less.
Correct, yes.
I mean, it's been, what, for, twelve years?
Two thousand, thirteen years, yes, correct.
Okay, very good.
And, yes.
We have a motion by Vice President Karlock, seconded by Mrs. Morland. And I'll read the resolution. "Resolved that the city council accepts the recommendation of the HRTRC that the mayor's vehicle allowance be increased from five hundred and fifty dollars per month to eight hundred and fifty dollars per month, effective the first pay period in two thousand and twenty-six and each year thereafter." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Insana.
Thank you.
All right, well, here we are at the end of the agenda. There's no further business before the Rochester Hills City Council. Our next regular meeting will be July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at seven o'clock PM. As always, we have a motion by Mrs. Mongioli, seconded by Mrs. Newbauer, to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? No, hearing none, we are adjourned. Have a great week.